Good evening. Welcome, everybody. It's my pleasure to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Tonight is Thursday, November 7th. It's great to see members of the community here with us, and we're looking forward tonight to part two of a technology conversation evolving towards our technology commitment. We're looking forward to revisiting a conversation related to our mascot. And I think with the Board's permission, especially since we have members of the faculty and community members here tonight, I'm going to suggest that we postpone our Board Subcommittee reports until the end of the meeting, and maybe instead we'll just go around for some quick Board announcements and then go right to our presentations. Okay? Great. Bill, may I start with you? So sorry. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, equal and fair, liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you, everybody. And with that, Bill, any announcements tonight?
Still none.
Okay. Thank you. How about you, Rory?
I don't today, thank you.
Parents?
None at this time.
Now the pressure's on. I actually took some children to the volleyball game on Saturday, which was very exciting. They had a good time, even though the result wasn't what they wanted, but it was kind of cool. There were people tailgating. I don't think they were members of our community, but there were tailgaters at PACE, so that was kind of cool and nice to see so many people supporting the sports, the girl's sports.
That's great. Thank you. I had just a couple of announcements because it has been a few weeks since we've met, and several of us had the opportunity to join members of the administration on a walk-through of the middle school. So, thank you so much for taking the time to lead us through the middle school. Thank you to our middle school teachers for opening their classrooms to us and to the middle school administration for joining us. It was great. Also, thank you to the administration and to our community for the Learning Cafe that many of us were able to attend last week. That was really valuable, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that later tonight when you update us on your thinking regarding the mascot. And then finally, I just wanted to thank the Drug Abuse Prevention Council. This is Bedford, Lewisboro, and Pound Ridge. Again, several of us were in attendance last night, I think it was just last night, at the Bedford Playhouse for a showing of a film called "Like," which I guess you'd describe as a documentary regarding the impact of social media on teens. And it was just a really nice opportunity to bring community members together, to ask some questions, and to share some thinking and best practices around social media, and our students, which seemed somewhat relevant to something that we're going to be talking about tonight. How about you, Andrew? Any announcements?
Sure.
Thank you.
Some quick announcements. Just to mention that tomorrow, both our middle school and high school will be honoring our veterans in advance of Veterans Day. I'd like to thank the student leaders who helped to make that possible, as well as the two principals of the schools for arranging those efforts. And a thank you, of course, to all of our veterans for your service to our country. And that's a good opportunity to remind us that school will be closed on Monday in observance of Veterans Day. I also want to congratulate all of our fall sports teams for their really outstanding seasons that many, all of them had. And without any break at all, next week, we have tryouts for our JV and varsity sports. Gets going right again. And also next week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we have the John Jay Middle School Drama, which is Julius Caesar this year, so get your tickets now.
Terrific. Thank you. That's great. I think that brings us to our first presentation, and again, we're going to turn our attention to instructional technology across the district evolving towards our technology commitment. Thank you.
So, we're going to have some folks joining us here up at the table.
Great. Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us.
Everybody. So, tonight, we are continuing a conversation that we started last time. I don't know who's got the clicker for the slides tonight. There we go. But we can go on to the next slide. So, just a reminder that last time we were together, we talked about a definition and some categorizations of instructional technology so that we were all on the same page in terms of what we were talking about. We considered strengths and concerns regarding technology implementation, and we thank our Board for participating with us in that conversation. And that created some foundation and gave us some questions from the Board that we're going to be thinking about with you tonight. So, tonight, with that in mind, we are going to be first looking at how we invest in technology, which was one of the questions that trustee gave us at the end of the last conversation, and sharing with you what we think is an interesting dilemma posed by the different choices we make when it comes to investing in technology. We're going to look at how we learn professionally around technology, because that's such an important aspect of always growing and learning with new devices and new opportunities around us. And then finally, we're going to get to that technology commitment that's mentioned in the title and talk about how it is we move to that. We're very grateful to have our instructional leaders and one of our staff developers with us tonight. Welcome to Jeff Curtis, Catherine Grabash, Anna Loeb, and Julianne Hoffman. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. Chris Nelson, our tech directors, with us again, and Mary. We'll all be contributing to the conversation tonight. And we're going to turn it over now to Chris, who's going to talk a little bit about that first question, which is how we invest in technology and some of the options that are available to us, to schools.
So, investing in technology, we basically have two options or two methods that we evaluate the acquisition of technology throughout the district. And one is based upon the needs that are driven by the task of the job at hand. We want to take a look at our clerical functions and our principals and folks that complete tasks on a regular basis. We buy technology to fit the job description. We look at instructional technology. There's two approaches that we have here that are listed on the slide that help us make some determinations. And one way or one approach to acquire technology is to have thoughtful conversations ahead of the purchase of the technology in such a way that we identify gaps or needs within the curriculum, and then bring in the right tools and, you know, infrastructure to be able to support those classroom environments. The other way is to bring in some tools that kind of inspire or bring forth anticipation of the use of technology. So, there's many times that we may not have identified a fit for technology, but we know that this has a lot of potential in regards to advancing, you know, different elements of the curriculum. So, there's, you know, vendors that might approach and say, hey, this could be a good fit, and we try to use technology in kind of a push-in model. As we look at the greater approach to that, I would say that the majority of our decisions are based on option A. For us, you know, we want to make sure that there's a need and that we've been thoughtful in terms of where it fits inside the classroom to help support our learning goals. And this approach has helped us, you know, have conversations ahead of the purchases. So, that conversation includes the acquisition of the asset, but it also might include in terms of what we'll follow up with is, what do you need to learn the technology, or how can we make sure that we can sustain the technology, or what can we do to make sure that there's some equity? So, if one teacher's asking, perhaps maybe it's a fit across the program or the grade level in terms of what's there. So, I think our approach is learning first, and that gives us a good understanding in terms of the outcomes once we acquire the technology. So, the exact return on investment on that, we try to, you know, get the best deal in terms of buying in volumes. We get the price down. We try to ensure that we're maintaining quality support in regards to maintaining that technology in terms of the wear and tear of it, and that allows us to sustain the technology as long as we can and still have some useful value out of it.
I'll just add to that a little bit, Chris. So, on that first slide that was up there a moment ago, you saw the phrase "one-to-one initiative" down there at the bottom. And you've probably, we imagine that trustees have heard about school districts that have decided to go on that one-to-one initiative where every student, maybe either in certain grade levels or sometimes in entire schools, are given a device, and that decision is made with a vision ahead of it, ahead of time, and all of those devices are purchased and given to students. They carry them with them, they carry them throughout the day, they take them home at night, and then the teaching and learning model in that model would follow, the instructional strategies would follow the devices. And what Chris has just pointed out is that we haven't taken that approach as a district. We've gone with teaching and learning first. We talk a lot about instruction and what that looks like, and then we've provided the devices that we think are necessary to support the teaching and learning model. So, the different strategies that schools take, one isn't right, one isn't wrong. They have pros and cons to them, which we want to talk about a little bit with you tonight, and they result in some interesting numbers, which I think Chris is going to get into now.
Yeah. So, you know, as our approach has, you know, departments and grade levels have asked us for technology over several budget cycles, we've gotten into a dilemma, or at least a curiosity in terms of inventory that's basically grown to match the number of folks that are in our environments. So, you know, if we were to take a snapshot of our current inventory, which includes all, you know, workstations and tablets and laptops, we're hovering around 3,400 items in our inventory that the techs support and maintain, and at last, our beds count was just the other day in terms of capturing numbers, we're around that 3,300 level. So, we are at that point where we have a one-to-one, although our approach hasn't been to establish a one-to-one. And that asks some interesting, you know, thoughts, and we've kind of put two questions out here in terms of, you know, what dilemmas do these numbers pose in regards to looking at this data? And then also, what opportunities might they create? And that's where I think we want to kind of open the dialogue to kind of maybe take a look at this and get some feedback.
So, we're pointing out here on the screen, we're being very honest and saying there are right now more devices in our schools than there are people who use those devices, and yet, I think our teachers who are here would be quick to say that despite that, there are still times when they might want access to technology, or they might want their students to have a set of laptops or iPads in the classroom, and they don't have them in that moment, because another teacher's using the cart down the hall, or they're in use somewhere else in the district. Because we didn't go, and we're not here to advocate tonight at all for one-to-one initiative. We just want to point out that the way we've gone about things, which is, we've responded to requests and needs from teachers, from students, from colleagues, and we've created sets of laptops, we've created devices for teachers to be available, and it's resulted in the numbers that you see here. And yet, still, there are times when people don't have, in that moment, what they might need, because it just doesn't, it doesn't work that way in this model. And so, it does create some interesting dilemmas, and one dilemma being that if we were to move forward over time and decide we want to move towards more of a one-to-one approach, and I'm not saying we do, but over time, it's potentially possible, that's actually a more efficient model than the one that we've pursued up to this point. If we got to the point of each student and each teacher having the one device they needed, there'd be fewer devices than you see up on the screen here. But then there's a flip side to that, which is, we don't necessarily want everyone to feel like they have to be using technology all the time and feel the pressure, well, since the district's created this one-to-one initiative, they must want our students to be using these things all the time, so let's find ways to use them. And that's what we meant earlier when we said, we don't want the teaching and learning to follow the technology, we want the technology to follow the teaching and learning. Is that resonating with people?
Yep.
Do you want to share any thoughts on that? Pose any questions on it? And if our ILS are, Catherine went away, and that's fine, too.
Please, Rory, go ahead.
It strikes me that probably every student in the building has a phone in addition to the device that's available to them, right? And it really isn't clear to me what they need the devices for. I'm sure there are good uses for them at certain junctures, but I'm not sure why every student, and I actually feel like maybe every student should not have a device. It's almost like we're forcing people then to think that the device, it's like an extension of their being, and that's really not, in my opinion, what we should be trying to turn out into the world. And I also noticed on my walk around the middle school that there were a number of different types of devices, and I wonder where standardization plays into all of this. If we've got 4,000 devices and they're not standardized, I'm sure the maintenance is a nightmare on that. And, yeah, it would be nice to dig a little deeper into what that inventory is and why we feel we need all that.
Briski, you could speak to that a little bit, if you want.
Yeah. And then that's one of the challenges that we do have, is that we buy in clusters and deploy in different areas at different times. So, it could be a grade level or department does have mixed inventory at different times, which, you know, has different performance issues or may or may not have the same ability to perform the same tasks based on the speed of the devices or the clarity of the screens and those types of things. So, we do have quite a bit of diversity. We've tried to minimize that over the last few years. We've been quite deliberate to kind of get into end-of-life cycle. We talk about acquisitions and taking in technology. I don't think we've been very clear in terms of when's an appropriate time to retire technology. And so, we've been trying to do a better job to say that, you know, this device should last us, you know, X amount of cycles of use for, you know, the budget cycles that we're in, so that we can get a better handle on, you know, closing that gap. But there is, there's a lot of diversity, and I think the distribution of it also depends on, you know, one teacher might be teaching one grade level one year and then makes a decision to move to another grade level, takes some technology with them that they've been using at one grade level to the other. So, we don't have a static environment at times, and that causes some complexity as well in terms of being able to support teachers where they are.
I guess an upside to that might be that students are flexible in terms of, you know, I might be working on an iPad today, and I might be working on a Chromebook tomorrow, and they're very agile and flexible in terms of what they're using. So, upsides and downsides, both.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. I guess, just in light of the slide right before this one, where there's an assertion that the mere presence of technology does not improve learning outcomes, from my perspective, looking at the slide with the numbers, is, it's important to look at it in conjunction with this assertion. And I would be really interested to hear from our instructional leaders and staff developers just a little bit more color around the numbers that are in that chart, and maybe anecdotal observations or stories around how technology has evolved in your own classrooms, and what dilemmas you think these numbers pose, or what opportunities they have created. That would, I think that would be really helpful to all of us.
I can jump in. I'm a sixth-grade math and science teacher at the middle school, and we have been, we've been using these 13, we have a set of 13 iPads that have been added to our classrooms this year, as well as the MacBook that, as all of the teachers have been given, so we use that for mirroring onto the screens in our classrooms to present our lessons. I have found the iPads to be an incredible teaching tool this year. I use them throughout both math and science, and I've been just kind of jumping in headfirst this year, learning on the fly, and the kids are just welcoming the opportunities to jump in and learn right with me. So, I use a lot of PowerPoint presentations for my lessons, and I've discovered a tool this year called PairDeck that we were just trained in at our last Staff Development Day. And it allows for formative assessment right in the middle of a lesson. You can jump in and have the kids interact with a question. And with them on the iPads, it's 13, and I have, you know, typically 22 to 24 kids in a class, and so they're partnered, paired up with one of the iPads right now. But it works really well for them to work together collaboratively, taking turns with the iPads, giving, you know, feedback to me as a teacher in the classroom. I can see right away who's understanding. I can see layers of who answered what to a question. I can present all of their information. In math, we do a lot of modeling, and I'll just run around, you know, take pictures of something with the iPad. We can quick throw it up on the screen for everyone to look at and share and talk about together. The kids can, you know, I can take mine off of the screen, and they can mirror their work up onto the board as well. So, it gives us a ton of opportunity in the classroom just for that collaborative environment to share what we're doing and not, you know, have to run something under a document camera or put it's just right there on the screen for us. So, it's been an incredible teaching tool from that angle. And then from more of a management platform as well, we've been using OneNote and developing use of the team, it's a team platform where the kids have a OneNote notebook, and we're trying to move a little bit more towards not a paperless, but, you know, less paper environment, so that we can have the kids working within OneNote on assignments. And that, again, gives me quick feedback on what they're doing, and it'll also create this running record of their work over the course of their career through the middle school optimally. So, we're working on developing that into a very usable structure for the kids and for us as teachers to collaborate around students. So, when we have our team meetings, when we meet with guidance, we can all put our notes into one space as teachers, so that we have that shared bank of information that we have to work from.
That's great.
So, there's just a couple of examples of how I've been using it in the classroom.
Thank you.
I can provide a specific example that I'm thinking about in my head now. Two years ago, the Children's Youth Ambassador made a challenge for children to read without walls. So, I kind of took it on as my personal challenge in the classroom, where I was going to kind of expand the walls of my library program and have the students think outside of just the four walls of our library. So, I found this really great site that was called Pen Pal Schools, and I was going to have my fifth graders corresponding with fifth graders in other states and other countries about what the culture in their communities was like, which I was super excited about, and the kids were super excited about. But unfortunately, we had a huge stumbling block with the technology at the time. I had a very old set of iPads in the library. We had not retired them when they probably should have been retired. And so, anytime we tried to get on the site, which really, in addition to providing a platform to talk to these fifth graders all over the world, achieve sort of like mini lessons that they could also work through informationally, it would just freeze, crash, completely frustrating for the students. So, we said, okay, we can't do it on the iPads in the library, we're going to go to the computer lab. Well, now we have a problem booking the computer lab, because the fifth grade, the time that I have the fifth graders in the library conflicts with the time the typing classes are scheduled in the library. So, it was like, how am I going to beg, borrow, and steal to get the kids in at this time that I need into the computer lab to do the unit? And by the time I take them from the library to the computer lab, we log in, they remember their passwords, we get all set up, they have maybe like 10 minutes to do the unit, which it turned out to be a very disappointing experience. We were all excited for it. So, I'm happy to share that this year, we're going to be starting the same experience again with a new set of iPads that we have in the library that is much more reliable. We also have a full set of keyboards that can plug directly into the iPads, just plug-and-go. It's going to go much faster, and I think this year is going to be a much better experience. I'm really excited.
That's a really great example. Can we just stay on that for one second? Can I ask you a follow-up? Just how do you process then the experience that the students had last year? You know, those students now have moved on, I guess, they're middle school students. So, how does that unfold for the students? And is that just now part of life and part of a school experience? Is that sometimes we're piloting something, and it's frustrating, and you have a timer, or you don't remember your login, or now you're over here, and the technology just doesn't quite get the job done? And then other times it does, and that's just all part of the evolution of your education in our schools? I mean, is that how you kind of just reconcile?
We certainly learned to be resilient and to continue on and to talk about, you know, like in certain cases, we had, certain kids had better experiences. So, it's like, okay, let's, you share the communication that you got to have with your pen pal, because not everybody got to have that same communication.
Sure. No, that's great.
So, make the best of it, but hopefully, we won't be struggling quite so much this year. Always have a backup plan. Always have a backup plan that doesn't involve the technology, just in case.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you.
I think to connect with the breaking down the walls and kind of connecting outside of our world, when technology is used well and when it enhances learning, which it seems like you were trying to do with what you were doing, it really can be beneficial for the students, because it gives them different experiences that they wouldn't necessarily have just in the classroom that they're in. And one example, I worked with a teacher in the World Language Program.
Catherine, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you, yeah, a little closer to my room.
Use the technology.
And she used Flipgrid, which is a video response program. It's an app, but it's also web-based, and she had her students connecting with classes in France, and they were responding back and forth just about simple things like holidays and traditions and things like that. And it really allowed them to get a different insight than they would have by just simply learning in their classroom.
Yeah. Thank you. Would you like to jump in?
Sure. My name is Jeff Curtis. I've had the good fortune of being in the district since 2001, and I teach health, which is really nice, because I have kids every other day. I have two sets of students, eight sections across those two days. So, I have a little over 200 or right around 200 students, and that means that the Mac laptop cart that I have in that classroom gets to see a lot of students, and since I'm fairly fluent in Mac and iOS, I can show the students a couple of things, and it fits well with our curriculum as well, because it's obviously an important time to talk about social media and internet safety and not recycling passers and all these things that they, you know, when you describe them as digital natives, people incorrectly make the assumption that they are sound digital natives, and that's not always the case. So, I have that good fortune to be able to talk about this from multiple perspectives. The laptop cart that we've had, in spite of the fact that it started in 2012, the Macs have held up. I've changed my approach. We're not using heavy-duty iMovie where the slow-spinning hard drive, the good news is still spinning, the bad news is they're dated and we've had to alter. But with web-based things, I can use them frequently, and we've utilized things that we project up on the screen, so kids can comment and be anonymous. We've done that with our resource officer, and they're talking about, you know, things torn from the headline about, is this legal or illegal and why? And the kids have some very unique perspectives about what they've heard and what they assume the law is, when in fact, that's not even close. So, again, I've had the capacity of, we've used iPads sometimes. I have today in one of my health classes, I was mirroring the PDF version of what they had in front of them. They didn't have the technology I did, but with the pencil and zooming, they could see exactly where I was wanting them to look on their document without me being able to run over with every student and say, this is where you should be looking, right? It is a multiplier in so many ways, and like Anna was talking about, a one-to-two is a great multiplier, because it invites the collaboration that they can't have if it's a laptop that's sitting there on a one-to-one. So, one of the pros that I see about not having one-to-one is that there are PC labs all over the place, and then there are places for them to get a Mac experience, so that whatever university they might pick, if there is a tech recommendation, they've probably seen it at our level. So, the technology, again, I think, and one of the things that's really gotten better, when you look at those numbers, four or five years ago, numbers like that would have meant, ooh, the network's going to be really challenged every single day. And the network improvements have been probably the most important improvement, I think, for quality of education. The Plan Bs are probably far less likely to be necessary than they used to fairly frequently pop up, you know? Power outage is one thing, but the network outages, we just don't see them nearly as often, which has been a really massive improvement, so.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Thank you.
Question. Sorry. But I just wonder about, not necessarily having massive tech problems that would prevent you from doing the lesson in a way that made sense, but I just wonder, do you sense that there's just kind of some leakage of time where you're dealing with logins and administrative stuff and things like that, whereas before, you could just say, you know, bring out, get your pencil and a piece of paper? And so, I just wonder, I watch my kids like deal with like a network thing or a tech support thing, and I just wonder, do you feel like you're losing time to that kind of administrative work?
At times, you definitely do. And that's what I, you know, was speaking to a little bit with the backup plan. Like, for example, today, I was doing a math lesson, and there were some issues with login for some kids logging into a program that we were using, and so, they had their math book by their side as well, and they had their math notebook. So, it's not an abandonment of the old ways of doing things, it's an addition and enhancement to the way we do things. So, it's a piece of the work, not all of the work, at least from my perspective in my classroom, because there's definitely that need for still working through the notebook, working through problems, working things out on whiteboards, which some of the board members was able to see in the classroom when they came in. But I, you know, for me, it's a tool, it's just another tool that we use, and there's always that, okay, so if you're waiting for the net, you know, if you're waiting for your password, in the meantime, work on that problem in your book. And so, that's the way I handle that issue, but I definitely understand what you're saying, that there can be this loss of time as you wait for things to be worked through. But we do have really good tech support as well, and I have to say, like today, we had one student who could not get into our OneNote notebook, and they were trying to access a Microsoft form that I was looking for some formative, some feedback from the kids, and called tech, and within 10 minutes, we had somebody in there working with us and worked it out. And so, that has been beneficial. Your hands with that.
Bill, go ahead, please.
I'm intrigued by the use of the anonymousness of surveys and questions, especially in health class, or probably in other places as well, that we want to get answers to some questions, or ask them honestly what they know and what they don't know, being able to sort of answer as a class, then say, okay, a quarter of you said that, and be able, is that one of the benefits of the anonymous angles to it?
Well, it is, and one of the, that particular version of that lesson, the students have to use their login, like they put their name, so I can see their name. I know who is making the comment, but for the student who isn't as comfortable speaking out for whatever social reason or whatever, they can still throw their ideas up. Or the student who is a little concerned that maybe they didn't have the first idea, but they saw someone else's comment, and they went, oh, and now that sparked something with them. And just having the name column from their perspective, like I don't have to worry about me defending a mistake. And it's one of the things we talk about is, look, whether it's my tech failing up here and I have to figure out and I have to figure out a way as a teacher to get us still to a place that we can find value, it gives them a chance to not have to worry about, you know, the person, you know how hard sometimes it is to raise your hand in a group that you're, you know, you haven't quite gotten comfortable yet, depending on the time of the year, whatever. So it's a nice option. You know, I've often thought about running debates that way. You know, a public debate in their English or global classes, the kids get very excited about it. But there's still a challenge and some anxiety for a lot of the students who have to do that and debate a student that, there's a whole bunch of extra social components that the teacher doesn't know anything about, just from their outside perspective. So an anonymous debate in this capacity would be, I think, fascinating to use as a learning tool.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Chris, I wonder if, I think that we sort of have two ways to look at technology. One is sort of across the district, and then one is sort of each individual classroom experience. And I wonder if we start to sort of marry those more, whether you think that we could actually reduce the number of devices, but actually achieve a better parity of need and availability? Like if we start to really be kind of aligned more clearly about where and when we need technology, whether you think eventually we could have less devices or whether, I mean, I don't know if you have a thought on that? It may be too big of a question.
And I think that's the conversation we continue to have is, as we make individual decisions on where to place technology, it's always a balance to try to make sure that we can access that technology for multiple purposes. So as we put more technology into classroom environments, because, you know, now we're trying to get that, you know, pairing of whatever, you know, goals there are for that particular lesson, if that classroom is not used 100% of the time, then we might have technology that's in place that may not be used, you know, just the rotation of schedule, not every room is used all day long. So where does that technology reside? If it's in a classroom, whereas before we had cards, where you had the flip of that where you had to, you planned purposely ahead to be able to schedule it and get there. So where you gain by getting proximity, you lose by, you know, shifting to, it's always trade-offs. And I guess it's hard to explain. I think that the teachers are trying to find a healthy balance, but in the same regards, where do you gain and lose the efficiencies? So whereas you might have a student forgetting passwords in the classroom, at least you haven't lost time to have to take the kids down to the computer lab. So you've already gained some time in some regards, but you still have other challenges to work. But then the frequency, because it is there more often, those same students that had a better experience in the fifth grade, let's go back to the library experience, because they had a successful experience, they might be more proficient in the sixth grade where they may not be as, you know, forgetful about their passwords because they value the experience that they're having. So I don't know if that completely answered the question, but it's, I don't know if it will reduce the vices. It's always, you know, as much as we add to the system, you know, the system then wants to use more of it, and then so we have more requests. So we're trying to find that balance in terms of how many is the right number and work with that.
I had a similar question about the numbers, but I think, I think your question maybe helped me to understand what the answer might be, that I was going to ask, how will we know when those numbers are healthy numbers? You know, how many devices should we have for this population of students and administrators, especially when we take into account that I think as the kids get older and move through the high school, they want to bring their own laptops to school anyway. They'd rather work on their own Chromebooks or Airbooks than ours. But I think what I hear you saying is that the answer isn't so much around what the healthy numbers would be, it's more when our needs meet, when our needs are being most effectively met, that's when we'll feel we've been most successful.
Exactly, exactly. And I think that involves, I don't think we've hit the norm yet of exactly how we're using technology in the classroom, so the number of devices hasn't, you know, hit that threshold yet in terms of the perfect mix. And you're right, we might get to a point where just the resources that students can bring to the classroom, you know, might offset some of our need to provide it. But then that might present some other challenges too, because, you know, if the student then has to then bring it in and maybe didn't know they needed it for that day, do they lose an opportunity even though they have the technology? And so we just make sure that we're communicating expectations clearly enough to be able to get the right, you know, devices in the right places, so.
Thank you.
Maybe just to wrap up this section, and then we're going to move on to the next. I think, I think as we move forward, our intention for now is, and you've heard this before in budget seasons and other times, increasingly we're moving to mobile devices. So that if we should get to a point where we decide that high school students, for example, should be carrying their devices with them, and then we wouldn't need more devices than we have students, we would be ready to do that if we got to that point. But we don't, we don't, we're not proposing that vision today, but we're moving in a direction that we'd be ready for it if that moment were to arrive. And now we're going to move to professional learning.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Favorite topic. So we think a lot about professional learning, and we're thinking more and more about it in terms of the learning commitment for adults as well as for students. So we're recognizing that it's not necessarily something very different. And we're fortunate that we have a professional development team, and Chris is a part of that team, as well as Catherine Graybosh, Allison Porcelli, and Candy Wilmot, our other staff developers. So we think together about adult learning and how it connects to student learning all the time. So we have a few things listed on our slide, some of the formal structures, as well as the informal structures that we use for professional learning. We just had on Election Day, our Superintendent's Conference Day, we ran three sessions of one-hour workshops, so we had about 20 offerings per session. So there were lots of choices. Technology was not the only topic, but it certainly was a big one. And so teachers have the opportunity to think about, what is the thing I'd like to learn next? What am I wanting to practice on? So there's some of that learning that is around the tools and becoming familiar, and there's some of that learning that's really around integrating technology and thinking about how I can enhance my instruction. But I thought it might be helpful for Catherine Graybosh, who does a lot of this work as a staff developer, to mention a few of the examples that she's been working on in the last year or so.
So I think a lot of the times, I will get teachers to know of a tool or something that they want to use. And my first question, and when I speak to them, is, you know, what's your goal? Where are you trying to put this into your curriculum? Because first, we really need to figure that out, and then we can see whether or not the tool fits. Because if it doesn't, then, you know, there may not be a reason to use the technology for whatever lesson you're trying to achieve. So I've done work with a couple of different teachers, and I shared one before about the World Language. There's also been some teachers in technology that I've worked with, and aside from iPads and MacBooks and things like that, she's actually using robots, little Ozobots. And her students have been coding the Ozobots and creating their own board games. And so learning that problem solving and how to make the robots move the way they need them to, and they've been doing that in groups. And that is another aspect of, you know, when you incorporate technology, those skills do transfer to a lot of different areas. There's been some work with science that I've been doing where there's a teacher that wants to try to use Padlet, which is an online-based, it's really like a bulletin board kind of, and students can post their ideas and their thoughts anonymously or with their names. And so this teacher is thinking about using it so they can take pictures of the labs that they've done and kind of reflect on there, what they thought they did well, maybe if they had some issues, and have them collaborate that way. So it's not just doing the lab, and then they clean it up and it's gone. They're actually able to keep, you know, some of the work that they've done on the Padlet. And then there are other things, like just from the workshop that I did on Tuesday, which was on Flipgrid, I have third-grade teachers next week that I'm going to meet with to implement that into their classroom because they were able to take away, you know, some ideas of how they might use it with their students. And so those are just a few of the ways that we're making sure that when the technology is being used, it's being used thoughtfully and well, and not just to, you know, be able to say, I'm using an iPad or I'm using a MacBook or whatever it might be.
Thank you. And I think, you know, the kind of work that Catherine does is that ongoing, job-embedded kind of professional learning that we know is really most meaningful because it's meeting a need in the teacher's teaching environment, thinking about the students, and through some thoughtful conversation and planning, they're able to think together about a tool that might work, or perhaps there's a better one, or perhaps there isn't technology that really fits that need. So I think that's a really helpful piece. So we have a few questions that we thought our ILS could think about with us. In what ways has the district supported your learning around tech integration? What do you want to learn more about? And what learning structures and strategies are most helpful to you?
I guess I can go since I went last to the first round.
Break the routine.
Do I get all three? Because I like to talk. I would say that the district has continued to be supportive. The fact that I have a laptop cart in a health and phys ed wing, I think, is tremendous. That has transmitted or translated over into our fitness center as well. So both sides of that department have access. We've used, you know, the board knows about the heart rate monitors and some of the other things that are there. So I don't think the support could be better. The recent staff development with CHOICE, as I was able to go down to a session that was taught by an Apple employee about their app, which is called Classroom, which is a great, I didn't know much about it, but it's a nice way for a teacher to manage a group of laptops and direct students and say, all right, and here's the activity that we're going to use, and boom, it shows up on their screens. I can pause something that they're doing so that I make sure they all get the instruction. There's really, and what I, the comment I made on my reflection was that, it's too bad the sessions weren't longer because there was such richness in it that, you know, I could have really used a double helping. So in that respect, that feeds into question two. I'm super excited about the new iOSs that are out, the new OS for Mac with Catalina, the iPad OS, which lets you be much more productive in a traditional sense if you want, and still have all the access to the great reasons that an iPad is helpful. And, you know, the last one I think is important, at least for me. I like to meet the students where they are and try to make lessons and activities that are relevant for them, not only because I'm a health teacher, but because I know they've got technology in their hands so frequently. So that's an important direction, has always been for me to say, okay, what are they doing already, and how can I get my topic into that avenue? Because I think that's the best way for them to go, oh. So I mean, I feel fortunate when I have a junior or senior stop by, and say, hey, Curtis, I had a Mac question. Could you show me how to do this or that? Or what about that, that thing you showed us on the iPad? How do I do that? Because I have this project or this class, and what, how can I make this work? So that's been a really nice piece of my experience here.
Thank you.
I think the district and the technology department has been wonderful in recognizing the libraries as sort of early adopters of technology, and recognizing that when we learn new things, we're happy to turnkey it to the people in our building that we work with. So being able to, obviously, I would echo what Jeff said about the professional development days, having freedom of choice in the sessions that we're going to, but also participating in things like model schools and the Innovation Cohort last year, really gave me the time to play with things and, you know, just experiment and find new things. And I'm always happy to try something new. And when I find something great, then I love to share it with the people I work with, so.
Yeah, and I definitely find that I learn best through application. So when we're working on something, one thing that's been very supportive this year especially has been technology days just within our school day. So they'll say, the tech team is here today, you have questions or things that you're working on, book some time with them so we can go in during our lunch or during our prep time and have some time to process together and work as a team of teachers around an issue that we're trying to work out with, whether it's our classes or using our OneNote notebook effectively. And that's been phenomenal support for all of us to be able to work on an issue right then as we're trying to create something for our classes.
That's great.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Now, we're going to move to the third and last section of our conversation tonight, and we're going to share with the board, and we know that you've seen it in the past, but this is our technology commitment, a statement that we wrote about a year ago to try to embody what it is that we want our teachers and our students to aspire towards. I'm not going to read it since it's there on the screen for you to see, but I'll just say that what's really important to us is that we want technology to create experiences for students that otherwise couldn't be created, and we don't want either our teachers or our students to feel like it's something they just have to use all the time because it's here. And we wouldn't want that. We know that there's lots of learning that has nothing to do with technology, that has to do with the people in the rooms, and that that's really important, as well as the books that are in the rooms, and that's really important. And we don't want to lose sight of that. And at the same time, we know that these tools could have, give us access to pretty amazing things. We want that opportunity for our students, for our teachers. And we also know that to figure out how to do those amazing things, sometimes you've got to learn how to use the devices, both and get through some of the stuff about logins and other things. You've got to get through that stage to get to those amazing things. So we recognize that. But we're trying to say in the statement is, we really want to be thoughtful about the use of technology. We know it has its place, we know it's here to stay, and our students are going to live in a world that uses it. At the same time, we don't want to lose sight of all the other things that we know are so important. With that in mind, we had a few questions, I think, just to round out this conversation.
And I think this was, again, for some insight from the ILS in terms of helping us understand where the tech commitment has fit. So the three questions up there, I don't know if you have any reflections?
Well, it's definitely, their world is filled with tech, and they are in this world of information. And I, you know, as Jeff was saying, a big piece of our role right now is teaching them how to use it responsibly and effectively, and to give them opportunities to explore the world in different ways. Like, I love the idea of reaching out to partnerships across the world. I mean, as we in the middle school are thinking this year about more of our global community and who we are as learners, we're going to be looking for opportunities to, you know, do those kinds of communications with different parts of the world. We're going to have an Olympic theme, and so it'll give us that chance to maybe reach out to communities and do something like a Flipgrid interaction. So the more we talk to each other as colleagues, the more our ideas kind of just build and develop, and it gives us that opportunity to bring those enhanced experiences to our students too. I have to say, like, that's been, for, I think, as teachers, our learning is just kind of, I feel like I just don't have enough time to learn it all right now because I'm constantly in this learning process right along with the kids. And I think that that's an exciting environment for all of us.
That's great. I think just having the technology available and trusting that it's going to work when you want it changes the program. It's not, you know, I'm, yesterday I was writing a paper and today I'm typing a paper. It's not about that at all. It's about providing opportunities that we would never be able to provide without the technology. Last year, when I came before the board, I talked about a project my students were doing where they were communicating with students, Steve Zoller's engineering students at the high school, where they designed and built their own golf courses. And that was really done 95% through communication, but via the technology. And we only had two face-to-face meetings in the course of that entire project. This year, I'm going to be doing a project for my fourth graders about sustainability activism, which I would never be able to do, and be able to give them like an authentic audience without having that technology available. So it just, it really changes the game in a way that is, it's so exciting and it's so engaging for the students.
That's great. Thank you.
I'll throw up the piece to the last one, and it's maybe not what you might expect me to say, but what have I done that exemplifies the commitment? It's the thing that Andrew was talking about. It's the days where, when it's possible, I say, your choice, use your device, my device, or pencil and paper to do this thing that could be accomplished in any number of ways. And for the student who is fluent in drawing, they're going to choose whatever that they might be excited about, a particular app or pen and paper or, you know, so that piece of the commitment is important, that it's not one piece for all, all the time. It's differentiated for who wants to do what, who wants to learn this, who's good at this thing or, so that's an important piece as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask?
Yeah.
Quick question, Marjorie. I guess the faculty, could you guys address sort of how you feel the rate of change? Is it too fast, too slow, just right? Are you moving? I just don't really have a sense for whether, and you did speak already to the development component of it, and it seems like that's appropriate, but in general, are we trying to implement technology too quickly in the classroom, too slowly? Are we behind the curve? Or do you feel like we're about where we should?
You know, I think that we're kind of taking it at a good pace right now. I don't feel like it's overwhelming. I don't see anybody really just trying to go all in technology. I think, you know, we are using it as that extra tool in the classroom at this point, at least from my experience in the middle school. I don't see anybody just, you know, full-on, just not using the tools like books and reading and notebooks. And I think it's just an add-on right now. It's just a, you know, enhancement to what we're doing, and I don't see it taking over anyone's curriculum. But things like, rather than just writing a book report using Padlet instead, you know, to keep a record of reading, things like communicating with other peers and across the district, it's been, you know, a tremendous way of using it. So it's a tool to use rather than just always going to a written task. It's something, a new way of communicating ideas.
So I think with anything, you're going to have early adopters and then people that are a little bit more hesitant to jump right in. are a little bit more hesitant to jump right in, but you need to provide a structure for the early adopters to be successful. Because I think where we were in the past was when things were failing consistently, then nobody was willing to try. So where we're at now is we have early adopters doing things. We have like the next stage coming in and feeling more comfortable trying something because they're confident that it's not going to kind of blow up in their faces. So I like, I would agree that I think we're, you know, on the right pace where certain people at this point probably are using it a little bit more and more comfortably, but I think we're moving in the right direction and we've provided like the support to get everybody to where we want today.
That's great. That's great. Any other questions or comments?
Could I, Mel, could I throw one more thing?
Yeah, please.
I would just like to say that I've been here since 2001, like I mentioned, and it seems to me that, I'm sure this has been said at a board meeting before, but under the leadership that Chris Nelson has provided with technology and supportive with his administrative team and the board support, we are in a really nice spot, it seems to me, based on some, you know, the experience that I've had thus far. It's really good to see how it's progressed, so I think everyone here is to be congratulated, especially Chris. Good job.
Thank you. If there aren't any other comments or questions, we really thank all of you, actually, including Chris, but all of our instructional leaders for taking the time to be with us this evening, hearing your experiences in the classroom. Yes?
I have a couple of questions, sorry.
Oh, pardon me. Go ahead.
I know you guys want to go home, but I have been listening and I'm making some notes. So seeing the number of the device, more devices than students, I mean, my first thought is that not all devices are, you know, equal, right? And you're going to use different things for different purposes. I mean, is that fair? So you might have technically more that per, devices per students or that ratio, but it sounds like you're utilizing them in different ways to, kind of like you said, Ms. Loeb, to enhance particular areas. I guess a question is, do we have any sense of what that quote-unquote device to student ratio might be at other institutions that are comparable to ours? I would just be curious because it strikes me that technology in education, which is such, you know, an important and pervasive, all-encompassing, touches every student situation, that I feel like we're probably in a pretty good position, right? I almost feel like it's a luxury to be able to say, we can go iOS, we can go Android, we can use tablets, we can use Chromebooks, et cetera, et cetera. I would love to just get a sense of that down the road if it were possible, just to kind of know where we sit in that, in that kind of arc, right? I'm really happy to hear that how you all and your colleagues don't, you know, the technology doesn't control you, you control it. You utilize it. It enhances, it really improves your work, and ultimately, it sounds like the pedagogy and the learning outcomes are still top priority and we're not just kind of in there slaves to the machine, so to speak. You know, just from my own child who, you know, Mrs. Hoffman knows and Mrs. Loeb knows, the kid loves screens, right? And yet, I think, I think through your work, your influence on her, because I know it's not mine, she's very responsible, you know, and she understands that there are dangers in the, in the online world, and she knows that there are insidious factors and players out there. And, you know, I feel like I can see what you're, what you're talking about tonight. I can see it in my student, my child, every time she's working. And the last thing I'll say is, especially when it comes to, again, the learning outcome, which to me is the most important thing, you know, and I think, Ms. Loeb, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Sophia said something to the effect of that, you know, she's not forced to do math tests on a computer or online, like she can do things on paper. And that is very heartening to me as a parent because I just want her to know how to do the things she should do, and the platform is less important to me than the actual intellectual and educational development. So for you to be able to exercise these tools and still give a kid a piece of paper and a pencil, if that's her best mode, is very encouraging to me. So again, I give you all a lot of credit and thank you. Now you can go home.
So we do thank you for coming, and what I was about to say just a few minutes ago is that we have been hearing just for a short while about the technology commitment, which evolved out of our more global learning commitment, and it really is so helpful to hear about your experiences with technology and in the classroom and with our students, just to help us understand the ways in which you're supporting the commitment and the commitment is supporting you. So thank you for providing that color tonight and for taking the time to share your experiences. It was great. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. While we're changing seats, I think this brings us to our opportunity for 6.02, which is an opportunity to turn our attention back to a conversation that we entered into at our last board meeting in October and also that we touched on back in September, actually, when we were first setting our board goals for the year and what began as a conversation around our leadership goal. So I think, Andrew, I'm going to turn it over to you and ask us to bring us up to speed.
Yep, that's actually exactly where I'm going to begin. So thank you, Marjorie. Just in case there's anybody in the audience tonight who hasn't been with us previously, I just want to recap briefly to say that, as Marjorie just noted, our Board of Education in September, during discussion of its goals for the year, expressed concern about our mascot, the Indians, and that at that time, they asked me to consider a process that could lead to a possible mascot change. After researching the issue and studying the history of this issue in our district and speaking with members of our community, at our meeting in October, I recommended to our board that on this issue, a decision makes more sense than a drawn-out process. Given the multiple decades our community has already given to this topic, given the quantity of research given to this topic across the country, the number of resolutions passed by state and national groups throughout the country, I don't think there's more for us to study locally, and I don't think that hearts and minds are likely to change regardless of the outcome of such a study. And that's why with that in mind, I said to our board back in October that the only educationally-based decision that I could recommend would be one to retire our current mascot. And our board indicated at the October meeting that they would consider my recommendations until tonight. But there have been some things that have happened since then. I want to talk a little bit about that. You, Marjorie, mentioned the Learning Cafe earlier. We had a Learning Cafe back in October, attended by about 70 members of our community. I want to thank again everyone who joined us that night. We had students, parents, staff, and other community members. We heard multiple perspectives that night, which is really the point of a Learning Cafe. I don't think anyone could have left that night thinking that everyone in the room agreed with them and without seeing that there are strong feelings on all sides of this issue. Conversation that night was civil and thoughtful, and as I did several times on the night itself, I want to commend again our students who were there for how articulate they were and how thoughtful they were under really what were challenging circumstances, in some cases being the only student at a table full of adults and speaking up for something that they believe even when they knew that at least some of the adults at the table didn't agree with them. Also, since our October meeting, I've heard questions from our community, and I want to try to address some of those questions now as best I can. I've heard people ask, if the district is willing to change the mascot, what will change next? Street names, town names? And I've heard rumors that we're considering changing the school colors or the name of our middle school and high school, John J. So I want to say definitively tonight, there are no such discussions on any of those topics. I can only think that what's happening for some is that they're making a connection to the news stories that we've seen and read in the last couple of years about the removal of certain statues and the possible renaming of certain buildings on college campuses around the country, and that perhaps people are connecting our discussion to that debate about whether or not it's appropriate to reconsider certain historical tributes based on new understandings of history. But that debate, whatever side of it you might choose to be on, is not the same as the discussion we've been having here. I'm sure we all know there are countless places, schools, towns, streets, throughout our country that are named in honor of people that we might admire, from George Washington to John Kennedy to Martin Luther King Jr. to Ronald Reagan, and there's no discussion of renaming the vast majority of those places, just as there has not been any discussion that I'm aware of of renaming the John J. schools or Katona. Instead, the conversation that has taken place in our community for at least 30 years and nationally for at least 60 years is specifically about the use of sports mascots to represent a people. That's all we're talking about here. Though it would be unfortunate, I think, to distract from this conversation by suggesting that it would lead to an entirely different conversation. I see no reason for that to happen here. Similarly, and again, there's been no discussion about changing our school colors. We like purple, and no one has proposed changing it. Another question I've heard, why is a small minority making this decision for an entire community? As I've mentioned previously tonight and on other occasions, members of this community, including students, parents, and staff, have been consistently advocating for this change for more than 30 years. Does everyone in the community know? Does a small number of people? I have no reason to think that it is. In 1990, it was the superintendent alone who vetoed a student-led decision to change the mascot. Those facts, together with the community members we've been hearing from since the conversation began again in September, including at this recent Learning Cafe, indicate that there's a significant portion of the community that shares the concerns and has shared them for a long time. Another question, why is the district not putting this decision to a vote of the full community? And I think there's a couple different reasons, answers to this question. First, the discussion that's been going on for so long involves the fact that there are many people across this country and in our community, people as well as agencies and other groups around the country, who believe that the use of Native American mascots is inappropriate and is offensive. And I would suggest that you don't take a vote to determine how offensive something is or to find out how many people it offends, and that's particularly true when it comes to protecting the rights of a persecuted minority. If you're concerned about protecting rights, the idea of asking for a majority vote, to me, doesn't make sense. But to me, that's the primary reason why you don't put it to a vote of the full community. But another reason is that our board and our administration, every year, make countless decisions, some of them on behalf of a small number in our schools and our community, some on behalf of the entire district, and we certainly, absolutely consider and value community input, but we don't put each and every decision out for a vote. Another question I've heard is, why are newer members of our community making a decision for those who have lived here longer? Question itself saddens me a little bit. Every community is comprised of people who have lived in it for varying amounts of time. It's hard to imagine a community where people don't move in and out. A community where some people grow old in their homes and then sell those homes to young families. We in the school certainly rely on that turnover so that we have new students every year, and in a strong community like this one, we listen to and we respect all the voices, no matter how long they've been here. Older voices remind us of history and tradition, and new voices bring perspectives and new vision, and both are important for the growth and strength of a healthy community. Still, I do want to address the question itself. In fact, in the recent weeks, I've heard from community members who've children graduated from John J. in the 70s, the 80s, the 90s, the 2000s, who believe very strongly that the mascot should change, and I've heard from community members of various generations who don't think it should change. So I don't think it's a generational issue and it would be a shame to falsely cause a generation to divide. I think the last question, other than the board's important question, which I'll get to in a minute, that I've heard is, why is the district ignoring the voices of students who voted on this issue about two years ago? That's certainly a very important question and the one that we take very much to heart. We want our students to know how much we respect them and their efforts that they make in school every day, and we do have students vote on things like student government elections because it's important practice for participation in a democracy. But our students are also very capable of understanding that not everything always goes the way we want it to, and not everything is appropriate for a vote, as I've just said a moment ago. It was our student government at John J. here at the high school who wanted to take the pulse of their peers a couple of years ago. I certainly don't fault them for their good intentions, and I don't think that their decision to take a poll two years ago needs to prevent our making a decision today. Our student government leaders at John J. have been advocating for 30 years to change the mascot. They certainly could have been disheartened when a previous superintendent vetoed their efforts, but they've persisted, and in recent years, they've been willing to acknowledge that this decision is perhaps beyond their scope, and they've turned to the administration for support, and I hope that that's what we are now providing them. Finally, I do want to get to the question that the board posed to me, I think, at our last meeting, which is regarding the costs of making this potential transition. I'd like to thank our athletic director, Chris McCarthy, who helped me with the numbers, and I want to say as clearly as I possibly can to the board here tonight that if this decision goes forward and we do make this transition, that there would absolutely be no need for any increase in next year's budget in order to fund this transition. Let me speak specifically to the costs. They fall into three categories. First category would be athletic uniforms, second would be the gym floor, third would be miscellaneous items like floor mats, signs, furniture. There are other things around that have mascots and names on them that we change. Taking each one, uniforms, in a typical year, we would spend about $25,000 on the replacement of uniforms for that year. That's in a typical year. There are years where we spend more than that, sometimes as much as about $50,000. It depends on which uniforms we're replacing, and in some years, we're trying to get ahead and we have money available, so we would make additional purchases. So anywhere from $25,000 to $50,000 to replace all the varsity uniforms in a given year, if we wanted to do it in one year, would be a cost of about $69,000. What's the difference between those first numbers I gave and the second number I gave? When it comes to the gym floor, the floor is resurfaced every year at a cost of about $6,000. That resurfacing is just the top level, the sort of the, varnish is probably not the right word, but the very top surface on the top, that's about $6,000. That happens every year, so that's not a new cost, but it's about every five years that we actually repaint the gym floor, and that is a cost of about $30,000. That was last done about two years ago, so it wouldn't be due to happen again for about another three years. If we were to do it again this summer, obviously, we wouldn't then need to do it again for another five years after that. So is it an additional cost? Yes. Would it delay additional costs in the future? It would delay it in some way. And the third cost that I mentioned, those miscellaneous items, total of about $25,000 to replace those. So those three costs are what it would take, assuming we wanted to do it all in one year, which we wouldn't necessarily have to do, but if we did, where would the money come from? Most importantly, it would not come from any other educational initiatives. At the end of a given budget year, there are inevitably some discrepancies between what was budgeted and what was actually spent. This happens for a variety of reasons, as board members certainly know. For example, if a staff member retires and we replace that person at a salary that's less than the retirement that we didn't anticipate, there's savings found there. Fuel costs can change throughout the year. Sometimes we find savings there. So it's not that unusual for us to have some money available at the end of the year that we put towards things. For example, last year, we did a significant amount of paving because we were able to. We paved, as the board knows, we paved a number of parking lots, we paved some roadways. It would be money from items like that, if we had it available at the end of this year, we would take some of those funds, and instead of doing that paving this year, we would put it towards some of the costs that I just mentioned, and I'm very confident that we would, we would do whatever we needed to, we would prioritize if we have to. We would not, as I just said at the beginning, we would not ask the board for any additional funds. There's one last thing I want to say before just turning to the board for your, the thoughts that you've been considering since our last meeting, and I want to say this, I think it's very important to recognize how hard this decision is for people who don't agree with it. When something is important to you and you don't have control over what happens to that thing, whatever it is, that's very hard. It would be hard for all of us. To be quite honest, I think about the families in our district and across New York State who were impacted by the state's decision last June to change the laws around vaccinations. They had no control over that decision, and we know that it created very personal, very emotional decisions for some of our families. Didn't change the outcome, it didn't make New York State's decision wrong, but it reminds me to recognize the challenge that some families are experiencing with this decision. It's not our intention to create that kind of personal challenge for our families. Our intention is to do what we think is right, and most importantly, in the long run, what is in the best interest of our students. So with all that said, my recommendation to the board remains the same as it's been in our previous meetings, and I welcome your thoughts tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure that board members would like to respond and offer their feedback, but I would just like to be sure to thank you for the thoughtfulness with which you've anticipated and addressed so many of the questions that have come and addressed so many of the questions that have come up repeatedly. I think for any of us who were here at the last board meeting or at the Learning Cafe or have seen some of the correspondence, you really have so thoughtfully provided a response that perhaps won't be met with enthusiasm by all community members, but that I think just so clearly demonstrates your leadership on this matter and your most sincere efforts to lead us forward through this discussion. So we really thank you for your thoughtfulness. With that, I don't know whether board members are on the table, or Terrence, please.
Yeah. I agree, Marjorie, with your assessment. I think Andrew and the administration have done a very good job of creating a framework for discussion that has brought in as much objective, historical, factual data to inform this decision, to try to de-escalate some of the emotion, which is, of course, understandable and a big part of it. You know, this dialogue is hard because it's uncomfortable, and no one likes to be uncomfortable. No one likes to engage in these unpleasant situations because they're often not dialogues because folks get entrenched, and then, especially in today's culture, it becomes a battle of the echo chambers, and that's not a productive thing sometimes, and it's hard. And I think that's why it hasn't changed in 30 years. And speaking for myself, and I've made these comments previously, so I'll just summarize my own kind of process as has driven me to try to understand why these emotions do run so deep and so hot, and I do think it comes back to identity and feeling that the changing of the mascot, the retiring of the mascot, is an attack on one's identity, and those who associate with the Indian mascot, associate that with a certain kind of pride or positivity in their own personal growth or evolution. I'm generalizing a little bit, but I can see why there's an attachment to that. You know, I said at the Learning Cafe, you know, there are folks at many institutions around the nation, in higher education in particular, where they associate with that, you know, the UConn Husky, or the Miami Hurricane, or the NC State Wolf Pack, or whatever it might be. Those become personal symbols and emblems, and I understand that, and I understand that far better now than I did before. You know, I'll repeat what Andrew said. The students have given me such great confidence that everything's going to be okay. You know, they are so articulate, they're so sophisticated, they're empathetic, they are caring about each other, and they understand their place in the world, and that is so impressive to me. And so that means our parents and our teachers and this community, we're doing something right. Listening to our students engage in this conversation just blows me away how wonderful they are. They understand how complicated this is. They understand how nuanced and how many layers and levels this involves, and they've avoided, in my experience so far, they have avoided the extreme politicization, they have avoided the name-calling, the xenophobic comments that have gone back and forth and overtaken some of this dialogue, especially on certain Facebook pages. Our students have avoided the ugliness of some of the racist and personal comments, and some of those comments have been directed at me and my family personally. You know, and that's easy, right? Because I'm the only person of color on the board, I'm the one that kind of kicked off this discussion, so it's easy to rally around that and to kind of lean into that simplicity because it's right there. The racist insults hurled at me, they don't hurt me as much as they irritate me, because I've been hearing "chink" since I was five years old. So I think people have to be a little more original than that if they want to get under my skin. I think what is most disheartening is that it's embarrassing because it's not emblematic of who we are as a community. And so for those kinds of comments to suddenly start to take over the conversation really casts a pall over the entire process, you know, and that's where I feel like we become distracted. Because it's easy to lean into the basic unfettered rage, and it's hard to actually to be open to learning and to evolving. You have to have courage, to be brave, and to change. And it's the students and the teachers and the administration that I really admire for their courage, their cumulative strength and character in standing up and standing behind this decision. So yeah, we see and hear and know all the comments that are being made on Facebook, even after those pages go private. We see them and hear them. And as unpleasant as it is, it drives home for me the fact that it is so important, it is even more important, to make this change based on that kind of evidence. So I am very happy and proud to support the administration, and I look forward to the next steps where we have a timeline to execute the retirement of this mascot.
Thank you. Please.
Yes, I was not at the last meeting, so I apologize for that, but I did watch the video from the meeting. I went to the Learning Cafe, I've read all of the emails, I've done a lot of listening. And I think listening is the best way to demonstrate respect to someone. And for over 50 years, the National Congress of American Indians have told us that Indian mascots are harmful to their community and to their children, and we haven't been listening. So to me, it just boils down to a very simple question. If someone tells you that what you're doing is hurting them, why wouldn't you stop? We have a choice. It's between continuing to do something that Native Americans find harmful, or we can stop. We can choose to do the right thing now, or we'll be back here in a few years when the community requests it, or students request another look at this issue, or if, you know, the state legislature requires it. I did notice that November is Native American Heritage Month, and I believe the best way to honor the indigenous people of this land is to listen to them and respectfully retire our Indian mascot.
Thank you. Other comments or feedback?
Very similar thoughts is that, and I said this last time, that people on both sides feel very strongly about their beliefs and their perception of how their beliefs or actions affect other people. The evidence is not unanimous, but certainly the vast majority of Native American groups that have put out something on this subject have been clear that it is hurtful. Doesn't mean we have to understand it, doesn't mean we have to agree with it, but I think at some point, sort of, that's the vote. That's where it comes from, is that it's somebody else is finding this hurtful, and that really has to come first. And like you mentioned early on, Andrew, one of the principal lessons of all of our attention to bullying lately has been that to put less emphasis on the spirit with which something was intended and more on the spirit in which it was received and perceived, when reasonable. And I think this is a great example of us having to relook at this through the lens of putting more weight on the way something is received and perceived, not our statements of, but we only meant it to be good. That's not how it was received, at least the majority of the time, through the majority of the organization.
It's starting to sound a bit like a broken record, but, and I would like to thank you, Andrew, and all of the support staff. I mean, your thoughtfulness, wisdom, I think sensitivity to this issue since September has been really outstanding, and I genuinely do thank you. It is a very sensitive issue. It didn't appear very sensitive to me initially because frankly, I personally haven't really grappled with this issue, although I have for the past few months. And I think something, it was something you said at maybe the very first conversation or maybe the subsequent conversation about, and I'm echoing Bill now, about intent versus impact. And it's very clear to me that if, that it's, you can have the best intentions in the world, and you can be very well-meaning, but if the impact of those intentions isn't having the desired effect, and especially if the people on whom you're having that impact tell you that it's not having the desire, so if you say you're honoring Native Americans, and maybe you truly in your heart of heart are, but if they tell you that they don't feel honored, there should be no question that we cease to do so. And so, you know, we probably need, it is divisive in the community. I would really like to try to find a way to build some cohesion going forward. I'm not sure how exactly to do that, but perhaps we can find a process that involves the entire community for finding a new mascot. We at one point had talked about finding other ways to honor the Native American community, and I think that that probably is still something that we should strive to do. But in general, I have no qualms whatsoever about supporting the administration and supporting your recommendation, Andrew. Thank you.
Okay. I mean, I think I've made it clear since we started discussing this that I do support the change of, and retirement of our mascot. And as I've listened to the community, I think the most important thing to me at this point is that if we make this decision, we create a process for that change that really honors the spirit of the use of the mascot by the community as it was intended. And so, looking for ways to honor our Native history, whether it be, you know, I've talked about this, you know, whether it be a plaque at our competition field that honors the people who came before us and the spirit in which we play our sports with integrity and honor. I think that, I just want to be clear that whatever the process is to make the change, how we retire it and sunset it, is respectful to the people who this is an emotional issue and allows them an opportunity to feel like we've heard them in looking for ways to honor the intent of the Indian mascot in ways in our district that are not using a mascot to do that. So I guess, I don't know what the timeline and the process is, but I think that's really important in this so that it gives everyone an opportunity to kind of take a breath and understand that this is a decision that the administration is recommending, but that it doesn't feel like it's being railroaded through them without us being respectful of sort of the loss. I don't, I don't know how we do that, and I'm sure you'll have some ideas, I have some ideas, but I guess I just want to make sure that the process of changing it does, is sensitive. I don't know how else to describe that, but I just think that it's sensitive and thoughtful and assures that students who believe in the mascot don't feel badly about the fact that it's being changed because they believed in it for really positive reasons, and they should know that they were good people for doing that. You know what I mean? Like, I just, I don't want anyone to walk away from this feeling like they were bad if they were excited and proud to be a John Jay Indian, because that was not what their intention was. And so I just think we need to be thoughtful about how we do it so that our students are kind of kept whole in that way. But I support the change.
I'll go next, and I am going to be a little bit different than, not in the, I am fully supportive. You come at it from a different perspective. I shared this a little bit last time in terms of that there are lots of people with very strong opinions on both sides, and honestly, I'm not one of them. I don't, didn't have a strong opinion coming in, and to be honest, I don't truly have a strong opinion right now. I'm, I mean, Andrew laid out at the beginning when he was talking tonight that he doesn't think that hearts and minds are going to change this, and I agree with that.
I'd like more.
Okay, sorry. But I do think it's important for the community to realize, we have been talking about this now, just us around the table, for two months, so it's not a matter that the community's voice hasn't been heard. I believe it has been heard, and again, I speak only for myself. If I thought the community was overwhelmingly in favor of keeping the Indians mascot, I would be saying that we shouldn't be changing the mascot, that we shouldn't be changing the mascot. I would be totally comfortable saying that. I don't believe that's where our community is. I believe that our community is very split. And as a result of that, I think then you come around and we have a discussion and we are where we are. And I've learned myself throughout the process, in terms of, I spoke last time, that one of the, one of the things that really spoke to me was someone, when they'd made the comment that, and this echoes something that Liz said earlier, that one of the reasons to make the change now is, if we don't make the change now, we're just going to be dealing with it in a couple years, and then a couple years after that, and then a couple years after that. Certainly, history shows us that over the past 30 years, and the way that I look at it is, I'm up here around this table to try and look at what's best for our students' educational interest over this year, next year, and really, I mean, it's not just a short term, my term is up at the end of the year, I'm looking to maximize how our students are doing during my term, I'm looking to maximize how KLSD students are both in the short term and in the long term. And I think to me, over the long term, having our superintendent not focused on this subject every two, three, four, or five years, to me, it's clearly in the best interest of our students. And for me, that makes it a pretty easy decision to say that we should be, that we should be retiring the mascot. But I think it's important for the community to realize, I feel like you have been heard, at least certainly by me, I truly don't believe that this is just a small minority slice of the community and therefore we're just reacting to that. I just don't believe that that's the case. And like I said, if I felt the overwhelming majority was in favor of keeping the mascot, I'd have no issues being six to one against me and me stating that. I just don't believe that that's where, I just don't believe that's where our community is.
Thank you. And maybe I'll just pick up where you left off with respect to what's best for Katona Lewis-Borough students now and in the future. And if I can just go back for a moment to the remarks that you made earlier, Andrew, when you mentioned there was one question that the board had asked. You actually answered a question that I hadn't expected you to answer, although you are right that we did ask the question about costs, but, which is appropriate because our two leadership goals are around fiscal stewardship and leadership. But the question we had asked at the outset really was, can you help us to understand through your educational purview whether our mascot is potentially at cross purposes with our goal of providing an inclusive, welcoming learning environment for all students and members of the Katona Lewis-Borough community? And in what I'm hearing tonight around the table, and if I can just synthesize maybe the perspective of the board that I'm hearing, as our educational leader, you have helped us to see that, that in fact, yes, the Indians mascot is now at cross purposes with our vision, our mission as an educational enterprise, and maybe that's a reflection of culture evolving. We've evolved to a point where you've got seven board members representing the entire community, some members of which are going to be disappointed by this decision and are going to feel a sense of loss and are going to feel saddened actually by the decision. But nevertheless, to the best of our ability to represent the community at large, we believe this is the right thing to do and the right... this is the right thing to do and the right way forward. And you've helped us to see that as our educational leader, which is what we had asked of you. So we thank you for that. And in addition, you've provided the costs which we had asked about, so thank you for that as well. I do hope that tonight's collective, shared decision to retire the mascot will, in the long run, help to foster a shared sense of purpose among all community members, even though we recognize that some people are feeling disappointed. I think in the future, near future, we'll be talking about a selection process for a new mascot, and my hope is that this would be a mascot that can be fully embodied and fully embraced, and that will make school spirit even more accessible and appealing, so that ultimately, we can be unified as a community in the pride that we all take in our schools and our students. I'm not sure whether there are any further comments.
Can I say one more thing? So, I want to pick up on what, you know, Julia was saying, which is a kind of respect for those who don't agree with this decision. And, you know, Julia and I were not on the Board of Ed when a previous administration and previous board made the decision to close Lewisboro Elementary School, you know? And we utilized resources and the system to vigorously oppose that closure, and ultimately, the school was closed. And I think, you know, and I'll, you know, Julia can correct me if, if I'm not accurate in speaking for her, but I think as a group, it wasn't just Julia and I, there were, there were dozens of us who went through that process. But I think as a group, it was very painful for that process to come to what felt like a rapid conclusion. And there was very little transition, and it felt like there wasn't empathy, it felt like we went through a bit of a kind of dog and pony show in terms of receiving public input and such. And, you know, I, I think we, we bear those burdens and scars, and we wear them in our current capacities and have more empathy. And I think that's also, I would say, why it's maybe a wiser and healthier decision to make an expeditious decision and to move on a path so that folks know where we stand and why the decisions were made. And I think there has been nothing but transparency and clarity in the data and in the directions that we're going and the reasoning behind them. So, but I, you know, I am definitely empathetic with those who want and need that time to process and to mourn how they're affected by this and what they're feeling. And I think that's a very reasonable thing, and we should be mindful and respectful of that.
Can I say one more thing? Sure. I think one of the things that, so I, I just want to echo one thing that Scott said that I just want to reinforce from my own experiences. I absolutely also wholeheartedly agree that this is, the opinion of the community is absolutely not in one direction or the other. I mean, we've heard from lots and lots and lots of people on this, and it is, you know, it is not a vocal minority that is asking for this change. And from a majority perspective, you know, I did research on all of the nations in New York State, and it is clearly the position of the nations of New York State that Indian mascots do not benefit them. And then I just think, one of the other things that I think about is, we are the fiduciary, we are fiduciarily responsible for the district in our roles as board members, and I think one of the significant changes in the last, you know, decade is, is DASSA. And I think that our charge to create an inclusive environment is not just from an educational standpoint, but legally, we're required to do so, and I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to make decisions that ameliorate that risk. And so I think that makes, compels me to understand why this is so important at this time.
If there aren't any other comments from board members at this time, we really thank you for the significant amount of time and the tremendous thoughtfulness with which you've approached this matter since it was initially raised during board dialogue back in September. This wasn't on the agenda, so to speak, for this fall, and you really have so, with such sensitivity, responded to every community member who's reached out to you. You facilitated a very successful forum dedicated to this topic, and you've helped us to reach shared unanimity about the way forward. So we really appreciate that, and we want to support you in whatever the next steps might be. I do think, next, we're going to turn our attention to the public forum, and I keep checking, and although we have community members with us here tonight, to my knowledge, nobody is waiting to speak. But I do just, if we're ready, want to move forward. We're at 7.0, public forum.
Can I just add one, one clarifying that I could imagine might be a question? So assuming the decision has been reached tonight, my intention would be to come back at the next meeting on the 21st, I think it's the 21st, to talk about and describe a process for selection of a new mascot and a timeline at that, at that meeting. Wondering about what that timeline might be.
Thank you.
It won't be chosen at next meeting.
Oh, no. No.
That's helpful. Thank you. Okay, we'll look forward to that. Even not having signed up, is anybody waiting to speak? Not? Okay, thank you. Then we're going to turn our attention to the consent agenda, item 8.0, and I'm not aware of any items that need to be voted on separately. Perhaps we'll pause in just a minute, I wanted to make some remarks about one consent agenda item. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Liz, thank you. Seconded by Bill, thank you. And I just wanted to take a moment, I think it's item 11, point, oh, hold on, 9.02, excuse me, 9.02. Again, I want to thank our administration. Item 9.02 is an amendment to our existing lease with the town of Lewisboro. And thank you to the administrators around this table for all of the great work that has gone into reaching this shared agreement. And thank you also to Paul Christensen and his entire team for all of the actual physical work that has gone into readying the space. And thank you to the town of Lewisboro for an expanded partnership. We're very pleased to be able to enter into a fiscally responsible agreement that potentially benefits all Katona Lewisboro families and community members, one way or the other. And with this amendment to our lease, we're now renting about 55% of the building, up from 20% previously. So this is a significant modification, and we feel grateful to be able to enter into the agreement, so thank you. If there isn't any further discussion, we can vote on the consent agenda? All in favor? 7-0, great, thank you. And this brings us to 13.01. We have some really generous gifts on the agenda tonight. Somebody like to make a motion to move these gifts? Thank you, Scott. Julia, thank you. We have a donation, the amount of $250 from C.T. Rush LLC Tournament, and this is for the Donna White Memorial Scholarship Fund. Also, $1,141.50 for the Donna White Memorial Scholarship Fund from David Nutall. And then finally, thank you to Arts Alive for a generous donation in the amount of $1,145.72 for the John Jay Middle School Art Gallery, which is terrific. All in favor of accepting these generous gifts? 7-0. And before we go to board dialogue and discussion, I'm just going to suggest that we go back up to our board committee reports, 4.01. And if I can start with audit, is there anything from the audit committee?
As you, we've done our work, and we won't be back together probably for a couple of months.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee?
Sure. So we had our first meeting a couple of weeks back. I thought it was, it was a good, productive meeting, David's first meeting, and I look forward, there were a couple of homework assignments for him for, for the next meeting, and looking forward to, to digging in, in a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. Mayor Council?
We met last Friday, and the discussion was about food trucks at PTO events, and some technology discussion too, so it all kind of very on theme. Couple of upcoming events at, let's see, November 20th at 7:00 PM, there's a presentation on anxiety in students at the high school. And the week of Thanksgiving, we will, the PTO is putting on a staff breakfast for the high schools. Yeah, I hope it was not a surprise.
Can we have food trucks at these events?
I think so. It was not finally resolved, but I will let you know.
That's exciting, thank you. That's great. Policy committee?
The fruits of our labor were.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you. And sustainability met last, I think that was just last Friday. We had a great meeting with our full committee, our community members, where we were talking about local initiatives and how to expand them across the district, how to shine the light on some of these initiatives, and then also talking about external factors that are going to come into play or inform our work specifically with regard to the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which sets New York on a path to achieve a carbon-free electricity system by 2040, and 85% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from 1990 by the year 2050. So New York is taking some significant steps toward global leadership in climate and clean energy, and this act is going to potentially inform some of the upcoming work of our committee and of the district, because there will be some opportunities through NYSERTA for us to take advantage of some financial incentives to move forward. So that's very exciting. And then Westchester-Putnam County School Board Association, we had our annual dinner last week, and I just want to say a tremendous thank you to our district administrators and board colleagues who attended the meeting. We had great representation from Katona Lewisboro, and really appreciate the support for WestPup programming, and thank you for taking the time to be there. That's all I had. So I think that brings us back to future, no, to board dialogue and discussion. Do we have any items for board and discussion beyond what has been discussed and dialogued? If not, then we can look ahead to future meetings.
Could I, could I just make one comment?
Sure.
As I was compelled by something that Terrence said. As we went through the whole mascot enlightenment for me, I thought that the community was, was extraordinarily civil, I really did. I thought that most of the dialogue, at least in person, and when people came to the microphone, it was actually really eye-opening for me, and it really affected me as a human being, how passionate some people were about the, the way in which they believed the mascot honored. But it's really a shock to me what Terrence said about the racial slurs that were passed, and I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know who said it, and I don't really want to know who said what, but I think that's a terrible way to treat people who are volunteering for this community, who are spending hours, countless hours, to support our children. To be treated that way, I think, is really, really just shameful. I mean, it really is terrible. And so, I can't speak on behalf of the board, but personally, parents, please accept, you know, if there's anything I can do to help you or support your family in any way, I think that that's just a terrible thing. I do believe it's a minority of the community, a very, very small minority of the community, and that mostly, this was a very civil discourse, but I just felt like it couldn't be left unacknowledged.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and you can feel free to buy me dinner at any point. That will always make me feel better. And I do want to also just say that, you know, I purposefully felt the need to recognize some of the ugliness in public, because if we don't, then in my estimation, it is a tacit, you know, you are tacitly approving it by, by not calling it out and saying that this is a problem. But I also agree with you, and I think we probably all feel this way, that that has not been the tone, or the language, or the, the, just the mood of the overall discussion and dialogue, and even the folks that are disagreeing with the, the retirement of the mascot, the large majority have been incredibly professional and respectful, and particularly our students have shown that, which makes me, again, just so, so proud of, of all of them and all of the teachers and the schools. So I hope my, my, I hope you'll forgive me for my moment of personal kind of emotion and, as a part of this, but I felt it was necessary, and I do want to make it clear that I do feel very proud to be a part of the community, and that I do feel like, under Andrew's leadership and the administration's leadership, and the leadership of our students, this challenging process and conversation has not overall been an unpleasant one. It has been overall very professional and very distinguished, and we really should feel proud of that.
Thank you for circling back to that, your comments. I think the only other thought that does come to mind, well, two thoughts really. One is, I really appreciate you having the presence of mind to circle back to that, because it's, it's really hard to say, both of the things you just said, it's hard to say, by and large, the community was so civil, this was really very healthy exercise in so many respects, but it's hard to say that when most of us sitting around the table know what Terrence is referring to, and experience that as a fact of the system, and it's unconscionable, we can all agree on that. But the other piece of this that I just do feel the need to state is that, you know, it's, it's social media, and we talk so much about what we can do for our kids to help them to have a healthy relationship to social media, and we talk about the importance of modeling civic discourse here, and we can only do so much, and hardly anybody ever comes, although tonight, we had a great turnout. But, but it's very interesting to me to see social media work its way into our board discourse, you know, I think, for the most part, it doesn't. A lot of things happen on social media all the time, you know? And I think we do work hard to refrain, actually, from letting that drain our emotional and intellectual energy, but then there comes a time, Terrence, I'm trying to look at you, it's hard to see you down there, where that's actually too tall of an order, you know? And this certainly is one of those times. And I just think it is actually an instructive moment for a few reasons, because of the locus of social media, and that's something I think we really all need to be thinking about, both with respect to what does that mean for our work, and how we respond to it, and what does it mean with respect to even more so the onus to model good citizenship and good behavior here and in our digital citizenship footprint. Digital citizenship. So I really do thank you for bringing that up. Scott?
So, I'm going to move off, I'm going to take a little bit of what you did and then move off the subject, but keeping on the framework in terms of social media and stuff that we don't engage in a back and forth, and I think that is absolutely the right thing from a board perspective. We're a board here, we're not a board on social media, that's not the appropriate avenue for us to be having a discussion. But I do want to just switch gears a little bit and go back to how we started our night, where we did a, we did a tour of LES. And just, I mean, there have been comments, both at the microphone at a previous meeting and, and, and out in the social media world, and I, just from my perspective, I just don't think those characterizations of LES is accurate. I mean, I just want to commend Andrew and Paul Christensen and our staff. I think LES is in really good shape in terms of, we approved, we approved a lease amendment, and the gym's going to be able to be put to good use, and the reason why it's being able, why it's going to be able to be put to good use on really very short notice from the time that we sign the lease to, the town being able to utilize it pretty much like that, is only because of the great effort by our administrators in keeping that asset in good condition. So while other people may have said other things about it being in less than good condition, I, I... in less than good condition, the facts speak otherwise. And the strongest testament to that is, the gym's going to be going online very shortly. And I just want to call out the administration for all of their effort for that. I think it's, a lot of things are said on social media, the board doesn't respond because that's not the appropriate place to do so. But I just want to make sure that it is reflected here, because you should be commended for that.
I think we're all in agreement that there's good stewardship.
Yeah.
And we really appreciate that, stewardship of our assets. Anything else? Okay, that brings us to future meetings. The board is going to next meet on Thursday, November 21st, at 7:45 here in the library. And in between now and then, the policy committee will meet Friday, November 15th, at 8:45 in the district office. And the finance committee will meet Tuesday, November 19th, 7:30 PM in the district office. And I'm going to make a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel matter, employment history relating to an individual, seconded by Roy. Roy, thank you. All in favor? 7-0. Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.